Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, June 20, 24. Just a reminder that a recording device will be used during this meeting, and we're going to open the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, and to us with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there any public comment for agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the -- we're going to bounce around a little bit on the agenda because our police is being utilized for a service call right now, so we'll go on to minutes of previous meeting. Do I have an approval for the June 6 meeting?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the June 6, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll turn it over to -- I think we all had --
Treasures.
Yeah, the treasures. I think we all had a moment to look at those. Do I have a motion to authorize the pay bills?
I have looked at them, and I'll make a motion to authorize the payment of the bills and approve the payroll.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to turn it over to Luke Revan, our Township Manager, now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On June 12th, Township staff mailed about 300 letters to property owners in the township regarding an ordinance the Board of Supervisors will consider adopting at their regular meeting on July 18th at 6:30 p.m. Soon advertisements will appear in the daily local news, and orange signs with the same information will begin appearing in areas where changes are contemplated. The property owners who received letters got them because their property would be in a different zone or a different zoning overlay if the ordinance was adopted. Township staff have written an article available on the homepage of ebrandywine.org, the purpose of which is to provide some additional information about why the changes are contemplated and the effect the changes would have. In general, there are three classes of affected property owners in the township. They are portions of the Apple Cross community north of East Reeseville Road and west of Ballinger, shown on the current zoning map as being R2, but were developed consistent with the township's R3 district. The map would change the area to be reflected as R3. A second change is amending the boundaries of the traditional neighborhood development or the TND2 zoning overlay in the vicinity of Guthrie'sville Village, consistent with the 2022 Comprehensive Plan recommendation. The third and final change is the introduction of village commercial development options on Herschel Pike near the border with West Brandywine Township. This change is also consistent with the 2022 Comprehensive Plan recommendations. The public notice has generated many inquiries to public staff. My thanks to the team for helping answer these questions. All interested parties are encouraged to visit the website for a summary of the changes and full text of the draft ordinance. On the subject of the Verizon franchise agreement, in February, this board authorized staff to join a multi-municipal initiative to update our franchise agreement with Verizon and to audit Verizon's past performance with the existing franchise agreement. I am pleased to report that there are now 27 participating municipalities in Chester County, which will result in a substantial savings on consultant fees. On June 17th, the first meeting was held. The project will include three phases, and brace yourself for these timelines. These are shockingly long. The first phase, the audit of the existing contract's performance, will be from July 2024 through June 2025. The renewal process begins in January 25 and ends in January 26, and the board will have until April 15, 2026 to adopt a new franchise agreement, which is when our existing contract expires. For reference, our only other franchise agreement is with Comcast, and it expires in June of 2027, but if no action is taken, it automatically renews until 2032, which I don't know if I can mark my calendar for 2032, but if I can, I will be sure to bring it up again then. A little later this evening, there'll be a discussion about specifications for a contract for the curbside collection of trash and recycling for a period beginning January 1st, 2026. I'd like to announce that unrelated to this process, a $300 payment was withheld from A.J. Bozinski for delayed trash service to the southern portions of the township during the week of the Memorial Day holiday. As per usual, I'll end my comments with a note about upcoming events. On Friday, June 21st at dusk, Parks and Recreation will be hosting the first free movie in the park featuring the animated film Migration. And on Thursday, June 27th at 6:30 p.m., Parks and Recreation will kick off the free summer concerts in the park with a performance by Jeff Crick, an Elvis tribute artist. I'm pleased to announce that both events are brought to you in cooperation with Mainline Health, who will be sponsoring the concerts and movies in the park this year. Respectfully submitted, Luke Revan, Township Manager.
Thank you, Luke. Building Inspector's report, we all have a copy of that. Township Roadmaster is not in this evening, so I'll turn it over to the East Brandywine Police Department for their report, please.
Good evening. The monthly report for May 2024, the total monthly events for East Brandywine were 2,463. We completed 214 investigations, ten criminal arrests, three summary, three warrant arrests, one juvenile petition. Department investigated 14 traffic accidents, issued 141 traffic citations. Officers won 10,869 miles. No training completed during the month of May. One correspondence from Chief, Downeytown Police Chief, Renidus Kunis. Thank you. Topps of the monthly investigations.
Thank you, Chief. Now I'll turn it over to the fire company for their report.
Good evening. For the month, we had 83 total incidents, 38 fire incidents, 45 medical incidents. In East Brandywine Township, we had 19 fire calls, 23 medicals. We had an average personnel of 13 responding with 15 for major incidents. We had six training exercises with an average of 20 personnel in attendance, total 261. Significance was that is that the Coatesville School District had given South Brandywine Middle School to the fire services and let us go over there each Wednesday night and basically just do whatever we had to do to tear it apart for training. We did have a significant accident with entrapment at Ballinger Road and East Reeseville Road in the middle of the day. I don't know if you guys saw that. And then just on Tuesday, as the heat started to break, we had two house fires, one in the afternoon in West Bradford and one later that evening in Upper Yewford. So it's been busy in the heat.
Thank you. I believe we have a Miquess report. We have no representative from Miquess here this evening. Do we? No? Okay, so we're going to go on to -- I'll turn it back over to Luke for the Municipal Authority lease agreement.
Thank you. Earlier this year, the Board of Supervisors tabled amending some changes, a agreement between the township and the municipal authority regarding the lease of an employee who would be a township employee but assigned to do tasks for the municipal authority. The time it was tabled, there was a series of revisions that needed to be implemented. I regret to report that I have not yet completed the task of incorporating all of the revisions, and therefore I would respectfully ask that this item be tabled at this time.
Okay. So while we're tabling that, it looks like we're going to have the ability to bounce back to our police department.
We're going to table this first, I'll just get it done. I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we table the employment assignment agreement, so all the revisions are incorporated, and I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'll turn it over to Chief for his 25-year service award.
Sorry about the delay, gentlemen. Chief Mark Cosi, very honored tonight. This is I've got the Chief Jeff Van Kansh. We are both very honored tonight to present three officers with service awards for their service to the township and the community. I think everyone knows how difficult a job the law enforcement profession has become. We, you know, there's a lot of sacrifices officers make on a daily basis, not only with their families, but with their personal health and well-being. We deal with a lot of crazy things, for example, COVID over the last couple of years, and it's quite an accomplishment when an officer can put 25 or more years in one department and reach that accolade and be recognized. I've been here 22 years, and this is the only second time that I've had the opportunity to do this, so I'm very honored to be able to do it. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to bring each officer up individually. I'll read a short bio, and we'll make their presentation to them. I'd like to have Sergeant James Ferraro come forward. Stand right there, sir. Yeah, turn around. So Sergeant Ferraro was hired part-time by East Brandywine Township in March of 1999. He became a full-time officer in November of 1999. He has little over 25 years of service. He'll be actually celebrating his 25th full-time pension-eligible service in November of this year. He was promoted to corporal in August 2011, was promoted to rank of sergeant in January Sergeant Ferraro is our police department's, one of our police department's less lethal instructors. That includes instructor certifications in our baton, pepper spray, taser, and handcuffing. He is also one of our department's field training officers, and he is a past member of the Chester County MERC team, which is the Mass Incident Response Team. Over his career, Sergeant Ferraro has accumulated six unit citations and one merit citation. And as with the other two officers, he has numerous other thank yous, accolades, and commendation letters from other police agencies and law enforcement organizations in the county. So with that, we want to present Sergeant Ferraro with a 20-year, 25, you'll notice on our gym, plus years of service to East Brandywine Township and the community.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Sergeant Steve Tyree to phone. Sergeant Steve Tyree was hired part-time in November of 1997. He became full-time with the department in August of 2000. He has a little over 27 years of service, and he will be celebrating his 25th full-time year pension-eligible service in April next year. He became a corporal in October of 2018. He was promoted to sergeant in October of 2020. It's going to take me a minute to get through. He is our department's first aid CPR and A&amp;D instructor. He is a department field training officer. He is our department JTAC officer. He is the department's evidence room technician, and he is the department's crime scene technician. He is also our department's IT officer and works closely with our outside IT company, and he is also the past school resource officer at Brandywine Wallace. Steve has accumulated six unit citations and three merit citations throughout his career. And again, he has other thank yous, accolades, and commendations in his file from other agencies and law enforcement organizations. So congratulations, Steve. I appreciate it. Finally, I would like to bring up Sergeant Mark Twiddell. Mark was hired part-time in September of 1998. He went full-time with the department in June of 1999. He has a little over 26 years of experience, and he just recently, last week or the week before, two weeks ago, celebrated his 25th full-time year of service with the department pension-eligible. He was promoted to corporal in August of 2007. He became sergeant in January of 2017. He is a department field training officer. He is our department's traffic specialist, which includes weights and measures and complex accident reconstruction. He is a past member of the Chester County SCAT team, which is the Serious Crash Accident Team, and he is a past member of the Chester County MERC team, the Mass Incident Response Team. Mark has accumulated seven unit citations, two merit citations, and one valor citation for saving a life. He has also numerous other thank yous, accolades, and commendation letters from residents and other law enforcement organizations. And special tonight is that in addition to his service award tonight, we are also presenting Mark with his 25-year exceptional service pin. This is a pin that's given to officers and in which we recognize them for the fact that they've completed 25 full-time years of service and that they are eligible for a full pension. But he's not leaving yet, so he's going to stick around for a while. So there's your pin. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for the short --
Nope, all good. Thank you, everybody, for attending that. I appreciate it. All right, we'll give the police department a minute to get their stuff in order. And while we're doing that, I'm going to turn it back over to Luke, and he can go on for the permission to advertise for the waste hauler bid. Or did we already? I guess we talked about it, but we haven't. Go ahead.
Yeah, I've been introducing this concept slowly, and I know this is everybody's favorite. I have a PowerPoint, so please bear with me. So the action item tonight would be granting staff permission to solicit bids for a waste hauler contract for the years 2025 through 2029. The current contract with our hauler, A.J. Bozinski, expires on December 31st of this year. The Second Class Township Code prohibits contracts longer than five years. The next steps in this process are ads would appear in the daily local news on June 26 and July 3rd, bids would be due, and there would be a public bid opening on August 2nd. We would proceed to a recommendation from the Budget Committee on August 8th, and then the board could potentially act on the apparent low bidder by awarding a contract on August 15th. The new contract would begin on January 1st, 2026.
No, I think that should be 2025.
2020, you are correct. I'm in franchise mode here. Franchise agreements are in 26.
We skipped a year.
Yeah, we did skip a year. That's just how fast government works.
We could open the old municipal dump for a year.
My apologies. The new contract would begin on January 1st of next year. There's a couple of variables in the bid specs that I think I wanted to hit on. First, the hauler may or may not quote a price for the purchase, assembly, and delivery of trash carts. Right now, the township provides recycle carts, but the landowners are responsible for their own trash carts. The request for the bid option solicits an additional 300 carts that would be put in storage here at the township for new homes built at a later date. The services that we are bidding out are weekly curbside collection for 3,507 stops for trash. We are also bidding out weekly curbside collection of recycle for 3,571 stops. We would have monthly curbside bulk collection. We would have bi-weekly service to the township's drop-off location. At this facility, there is a recycle drop-off facility. And we would also have six curbside collections of yard waste each year. Couple more variables in here. The term of the new contract would be three years with optional fourth and fifth years. The arrangement for the profit-loss on recyclables collected would be retained by the townships. The material would be conveyed to a materials recovery facility identified by a multi-municipal process and marketing contract. The incumbent right now is Total Recycle in Birdsboro, and the amount of money either paid to dispose of recycling or earned from marketing of the post-consumer material is due to the township. The hauler may propose changing our collection date, which is Tuesday, but if they do so, they must pay for public notice. We would like a letter to go to every property saying that there would be a new trash date in advance of making the change. The reason why we're giving them the flexibility is that we wouldn't want to preclude a bidder who has free equipment on a particular day of the week that they may want to substitute for Tuesday. Another change would be that the hauler may stay out one hour longer on collection day. Right now, the contract says they must complete their work by 5:00. We're giving them an additional day. That's based on feedback from haulers. We are not changing the start time, and I will note, this is a subject of rare, but not unheard of, concerns from residents who complain about recycle collection noise at that hour. I hear those concerns, and as a not mourning person, I am very sympathetic. However, I would think it is important to maximize the time pre-rush hour for the hauler to be able to collect areas in our community that are heavily trafficked during normal business hours. I would take a minute to share the results of a public opinion, a poll that was from our 2022 Comprehensive Plan. Note that there is broad consensus with the services that we're providing currently. Obviously, this was before this year, where we've had a few service concerns I touched on earlier in this meeting. I would say that there is largely, opinion is divided, with the largest single group not having any opinion whatsoever as to whether or not we buy trash carts, a result that somewhat surprised me. There is not broad consensus that we should buy trash carts if that is a financially viable There is strong disagreement that we should do collection more than once a week. There is a consensus that we should continue to do the curbside leaf collection. That's done by Public Works, not by the hauler here. There is consensus that we should continue the curbside collection of limbs on request, again, a service done by Public Works. And consensus that the township should retain the recycle drop-off facility and that we should continue the weekend curbside yard collection six times a year. So with -- yes, I think I covered everything in there. So at this time, I would respectfully ask the board authorize staff to advertise this bid opportunity to waste haulers in the area.
I have a question before you have the motion. In your wonderful highlights there, for D.J. Bozinski, and they no longer exist. So is there anything in the contract that the parent corporation subsidiary that owns more than, of numerous haulers, can only submit one bid? In other words, so we don't have tech stacked, especially seems to most of the haulers that would be bidding for us were the ones that were acquired by this company.
Right. So first, I'm going to respectfully quibble with the way you worded the -- I would say A.J. Bozinski still exists. It is now, however, a subsidiary of a larger organization.
Right. I don't disagree with you, but they can't, they can still have the name, but they still have to, what I was getting at, we need the parent company in the specifications.
Correct. So I would draw your attention to page 18 of the draft agreement in front of you. This document is the non collusion affidavit of the prime bidder. Any entity with the same ownership should not bid twice, and they would be, so any subsidiaries of the same private company should not be submitting two bids, and that's what this notarized statement we're asking of the applicant.
Just want to make sure the supervisors understood that, that -- Okay. I'll make a motion that we advertise the waste hauling bid contract for the period beginning January 1st of 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Luke. You can continue with the resignation of Greg Wagman.
Thank you. Our turnover and our valued volunteers continues. We're in receipt of a letter dated June 12th from Greg Wagman, a member of the Zoning Hearing Board, indicating that he is moving from the community and will be unable to continue serving on the Zoning Hearing Board. So at this time, I regretfully respect that the board accept the resignation of Mr. Wagman.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Greg Wagman from the Zoning Hearing Board.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Luke, you might as well just keep going here.
All right, well, this one's a tag team item, so the next item on your agenda has to do with Ordinance 5 of 2024. It is an ordinance, so I'll be relying on our solicitor to specify how it was advertised properly prior to adoption. This is not the first time this has been an agenda item. We previously discussed amending the solicitor's license section of our code. There are at least three areas of the code that are changing in this. I would draw your attention to a new line being added to the rules that apply to license holders, and that is that they do not solicit on properties or in communities posted with signs prohibiting solicitation. A second change, and this is also new since the last time we discussed this, we have removed the cost of a permit from the section of code, from the ordinance itself, and instead referenced that the fees for a permit be set by resolution. I think this is best practice. Anytime we reference a cost for a permit, it's best not to include the dollar amount in the ordinance, but instead reference a resolution in that ordinance, therefore, and it would be far easier than to update the costs of the various permits in the township. You'll note a little later on your agenda, under Item 10D, there is an adopt, there is a revised fee schedule. The only thing that has changed on that fee schedule is the new price for the solicitor's permit. The last of the three changes is a reference to whom an applicant is to send their materials. We're changing the reference from "to" the township secretary to the police department secretary. The administration of this section of our code is done by the police. So with that, Chief, did you have anything to add to my comments? All right. Mr. Solicitor, any con?
No, it was properly advertised, as you suggested.
Anybody have any questions pertaining to it? Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt ordinance of number 5 of 2024.
I'll second. Favor?
Aye.
Okay, Luke.
Thank you. All right, the action item for number 10B, the board is so inclined, is to authorize staff to advertise for adoption, for adoption, a change for an adoption, for adoption, a change to the densities allowed as cluster developments in the R-one and R-two districts. At the last time this matter was discussed, uh, there was a change proposed, namely having to do with the maximum density, or the, I'm sorry, the maximum open space required in both an R-one and R-two. That change necessitated a re-referral to Chester County for Act two forty-seven review. In your packet is the response of Chester County, um, uh, to the revised ordinance. And I can also report that the planning commission has also reviewed this letter and is recommending that the board adopt the ordinance. However, the action item here is to, to authorize staff to advertise it.
Is there any questions pertaining to that? Yeah, you mentioned maximum open space. I thought it was minimum open space of fifty percent.
It's this open space requirement. Yeah. It, it, the. Yeah, so, so the, um, I, I may have misspoken. Thank you for the second, the second opposite correction there. I, I.
Right, so minimum of fifty percent.
Yes. So the two changes that are now incorporated in this, one change is new and one change is older. The change that is new is that the minimum open space is now larger if you elect to develop an R-one or R-two parcel using the cluster option. Is that better phrased?
Yeah, I think we got it there.
Thank you. I did misspeak.
Any other questions? Any motions? Uh, I move that we, uh, advertise the, um, maximum density and required open space requirements under R-one and R-two cluster zoning. Get everything in there?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
All right, and I guess this is going to Lisa now.
So Resolution eight of twenty twenty-four is, um, not a typical resolution. It's for, for planning module. It's a standard.
All right, Tom, did you have any issues with this?
Uh, no, and it was, uh, recommended that it be by the tear professionals for approval.
Board have any questions? Thanks, who have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution eight of twenty-four, plan revision for new land development. Is that what we're?
I, I, i- 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 I would, I, I think that the recommendation is to be, uh, to adopt Resolution eight of twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution eight of twenty twenty-four.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Lisa, do you have a copy of that for signature? Okay, understood. Okay. Uh, Luke, Resolution nine.
Right, so as promised, this is the resolution that has a new line item that, that indicates the cost of a solicitor's permit. Earlier, I said that the recommendation was, uh, that we adopt this as a resolution to make it easier to, to update from time to time. I would be, it would be dishonest of me to not also indicate that it represents a increase in the fee for the solicitor's license. The ordinance, the old ordinance listed the, the, the cost at twenty-five dollars and the, uh, the resolution shows that the permit application fee is one hundred dollars.
Any questions?
No. I, 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 I will further, I know that we just had no questions, but I can't stop myself when I talk.
No, don't feel bad. I actually read, read it to see what changed.
I think it's important to note that it, it is, the township does not set fee schedules to, to make money. We set fee schedules based on our experience of processing these permits. And, uh, the, the dollar amount represents, uh, the, the township staff's best estimation of the actual cost of processing a permit.
Understood. And do I have a, uh, motion for the approval of the resolution? I'll make a motion, motion to adopt Resolution, well, nine now, right? Not nine of twenty twenty-four, adopting a master fee schedule for various permits and application fees. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think we covered everything on the first page. Uh, are there any public comments for non-agenda items? Being none, I noticed there was an executive session held on six, six, twenty-four to discuss real estate, legal, and professional man, personnel matters. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.